Well, welcome, everybody. We have the minutes of the June 19 meeting. Everybody had a chance to read through those. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to first.
For a second.
Second.
Roll call, look please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beesel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Quick, let's pass something else while it's not being attended. Okay, we are now the visitors communications part. We have some exciting things to start with. We're going to start off with badge pinning for Joe Palucci. Chief Mike Daley, if you'll come up and do the honors.
See, this isn't fair. Look how young he looks.
Yeah.
Now, I'm feeling really, really good.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Dill, Mr. Yewell, Chief Bailey. It's always a great pleasure on these kind of nights to obviously have the moment to be able to introduce our new members to the police department and obviously to our Fort Thomas family. So, that's what we're going to do tonight, and I'm going to present Joe, obviously, with the badge and hoping to win our career with F T P D. Like I said, this is Joe Palucci. He lives in Fort Thomas with his mom, sisters and brother. He graduated from Highlands High School. When he was going through the hiring process, he was currently enrolled at Thomas More College, majoring in criminal justice. Obviously, through the hiring process and bringing him onboard to our police department, that's kind of on hold just for a moment, but that's something that, you know, we really want to see Joe eventually, when he gets settled back from the academy, gets through F T O. I think, what do you got, about a semester?
Eighteen hours.
Yeah, he's got eighteen hours. So, we're definitely going to stress the importance of getting back, just like we've talked about, and finishing up on that when he gets settled and get on a ship. Joe's first day with us was last Monday. He's been with us over a little over a week, basically just getting acclimated, everything on the human resource side and obviously getting acclimated with everybody within the police department and within the city building. He reports to the academy July 23rd, Sunday, all right, for 23 weeks. Don't be late. And Joe, when he comes back and he puts on that uniform, will be wearing badge 4451 for the rest of his career. So, with that said, congratulations. I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
I've known Joe for a long, long time. It's kind of neat to have the ability to have a guy like him go through our process. He's done so well throughout everything in our hiring process. He's performed well, just like Kalen did. But the neat thing is, you know, he's obviously graduated from Highlands High School, grew up here in town. He's that hometown boy, and it's always nice when you have a chance to bring a hometown person onboard to within our, in our city because they're very familiar with it. I grew up with Joe's mom, and obviously, as I say, I'll let him do those introductions, but congratulations.
Great. Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council, the mayor, Chief Daley, for this opportunity. I'm extremely excited to be down at the academy and do great down there, get back up here, get on the streets and start going. I'd like to introduce my family, this is my mom, Jan Palucci, and my dad, Tom Palucci, and my girlfriend, Hannah Kaler. And they've all helped me a lot through the way, and they've had my back full time and helped me through this whole process. So, I don't think I'd be here without them. So, I'd like to thank you guys again for the opportunity. It means a lot. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, and welcome to the Fort Thomas Police Force.
Thank you.
That's great. Congratulations. All right, well, thank you so much. We will move on with the meeting. This is time for visitors and communications. Do we have any written communications?
No.
Okay. If anybody in the, out there in the audience would like to address council, please step forward to the podium and give your name and address. And, talk to us.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Holmes. My address is 53 Bluegrass Avenue here in Fort Thomas, Kentucky. I have not been sworn in, so I don't know if that's a real event at this time.
That's a different, different.
Yeah. We don't have to be sworn in. But tell the truth anyway.
I will definitely, I just strive to do so. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk to the council about a situation that has come to light in our neighborhood that's a little bit alarming, and I'll try not to be too emotional. We have a convicted child molester who has moved into our neighborhood. We live right here on Bluegrass. Our property at the end of the cul-de-sac backs up to the middle school and high school. It was our understanding that child molesters cannot live within a thousand feet of schools or other place where children congregate. It has come to our attention that in the state of Kentucky, anyone whose crime and conviction happened prior to 2006 is exempted from this restriction. So, based on our research, I am here essentially to question and challenge that if that case law is being appropriately applied in this situation. So, in summary, in looking at the case law, it appears that the case was Commonwealth versus Baker. Mr. Baker, at the time of his offense, it was 1995, from his offense and conviction, that happened prior to any laws being in effect that carried the residency restriction. In this situation, for the offender that is on our block, his crime was committed over the course of 2002 and 2003, and his conviction in 2004. At the time of his crime and conviction, both in the state of Kentucky and in the state of Georgia where he was convicted and it happened, there was a residency restriction that was identical to what it is here now. So, I do not find that the ex post facto should apply in this situation. Additionally, he was not a resident or a property owner of the place where he is a resident right now, so we would not be removing him from his property that he owns, which is also a clause in the Constitution. And the last point, which is probably minor at this point, is that he moved to the state knowing what the laws were in this place. He was not a resident, and he was not convicted here. And it was post after the law was enacted. Over the whole United States, every state has kind of different adaptations of how they've interpreted the law and how they are applying it. So, my ask at this point is essentially that. That is my first question, is in this situation, is case law being appropriately applied? And I would ask Jan, as our city attorney, what your opinion is on this, and if there's anything that we could be, that can be done to ask him to leave the property.
Do you have other questions? Do you want to do a kind of back and forth, or do you want to do your whole presentation?
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, because some of the, the answer to that might preempt some of my other questions.
Well, my answer to that might preempt your whole discussion.
Okay.
The city became aware of the situation, and they contacted this gentleman's parole officer. They, we've done research on it, and we have had conversations with the Campbell County attorney.
Okay.
Steve Franzen is the Campbell County attorney. I spoke to him this afternoon, and with his permission, I can tell you this. He has had delivered to this individual a letter today advising him that he needs to move from that location.
Thank you.
And he has given him a reasonable amount of time within which to move.
Okay.
And if he doesn't, he advised him in that same letter that he would be charged.
That preamps all of my questions.
Well, that's why. Also, one of our officers spoke directly with this gentleman previously, and he indicated that he is in the process of relocating to another city.
Okay, great.
So, I didn't want to steal your thunder, but...
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. So, that's, that's all we were here to find out? Thank you.
I appreciate you coming to council, and we have received a few emails, and that's what started the process forward about looking into it, and we got the latest information this afternoon, so we did want to say...
And I would also like to say, Police Chief Daley, your officers have been very responsive. The city council has been very responsive and supportive of our concerns, so thank you.
Now, let me just make one comment.
Sure.
This does not prohibit him or anybody else in his situation from being on your street.
Correct.
They cannot reside, and residing is defined by the statute as sleeping.
Correct.
So, if you would see this individual on your street, he's not breaking any laws.
Understood.
But he can't live there, and he has indicated he doesn't have the intention of living there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes. Guys, did I miss anything? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address council on any matter?
My name's David Edmonds. I'm one of the owners of Midlake F.A. And in February, we came back, and I came up here and asked about parking lines being put down on the streets, and we said we were going to get around about it and see what we could have done about it. Is there any fourth notion of that actually being done, or is that something that we could do if we do it to the actual way that it's supposed to be done, going following up South Fort Thomas Avenue to the stop sign?
No. We don't advise that you do it. Okay. Proud. We will do it, and I will make sure that we do it.
Is that something, I'm just trying to figure out, like, if it is actually something that's going to be gone.
Yes, we'll do it, we'll do it as soon as we can schedule it, and it won't be long at all. We can take care of it.
That's all I ask? Awesome.
Our apologies for the delay.
No, it's okay.
But thanks for coming up with a reminder.
I just want to keep it, keep the ball rolling.
Yes, exactly.
I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? If not, we'll move right ahead to reports of officers. Fire Department monthly report. Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, members of council, Mr. Dill. I just have one item I just wanted to point out in the monthly report, the June monthly report that was sent, just to let you know that the fire loss was a little bit higher than this past month, and obviously, that, the major contributor to that was the fire, the structured fire 35 Porter Lane on June the 3rd. So, just to get a question about that, I want to kind of clarify that. Really don't have anything else in regard to the report. It's summer, we're trying to get some details done. Hydrant flushing is done, so our hydrant flowing tests are done, so that'll, that'll be good, and we'll move on to some other things. I wanted to also mention that during the 7-4 and 7-8 events in the park, we had very minor, I wouldn't say injuries, but minor instances where we dealt with individuals and nothing major. So, again, about five or six each day really kind of rounded out to, so nothing really major. It was pretty uneventful, but we were ready, and obviously had trailers there for Chief Daley and his crew and mine, and anybody else that need to be up there in the command post area, and we'll again have those there for September also, just an FYI. But, again, just some minor stuff, and other than that, it was exciting to be a part of the 150th anniversary for the city. So, if that, I feel any questions council may have in regard to the fire department report and our department.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to receive and file.
For a second.
Second.
Roll call, look please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beesel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Swallow?
Excellent, thanks. Police Department report. Chief Daley.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. The only thing I really wanted to comment on for the June report is on the page where recognition is. There's a little paragraph right above Kalen on the miscellaneous area, and I think it's always neat to note Officer Peak received a thank you letter from a driver on a traffic stop, and the driver ultimately, during the traffic stop, ended up getting a traffic citation from Officer Peak. But I think if you take time to read that, I think it's really neat to be able to see that we got to have guys like Officer Peak, along with everybody else on the PD, that communicate this way with our citizens, you know, with the public in Campbell County. And he went on to say in the letter what, you know, what great work he's doing and what an example he sets for the police department. I thought I'd just share that a little bit, and other than that, like Chief Bailey said, everything during July 4th week went very, very smooth. We had one little incident where somebody decided they got a little too excited and they wanted to jump up on the stage, but it was controlled and it all worked out for the best. But other than that, if there's any questions I need to field, I'll try to answer them for you.
First of all, the letter, the guy that got a citation and sent a thank you letter, that's incredible.
It is.
Absolutely incredible. It just speaks so highly of the police department and your entire force.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And yeah, I saw those guns, and I thought you all did a great job, that they were out there dancing for just a few seconds, all of a sudden they very nicely came over and ushered them right off, and that was the end of it.
Yes.
And it was like, if you weren't watching, you didn't even know it happened.
Man.
So, they did a great job. And it was a, we know it was wonderful, man, the whole week was awesome. Great, thanks, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
I'd move to receive and file.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beesel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Swallow?
All right, city administrators report. Mr. Dill.
I actually just had a couple of things picking up on the sesquicentennial celebration. That just rolls off like, well, I don't know what the next one is, but I won't be able to say it. Obviously, there was a lot of volunteers that were participants in that. It was a great week. You're hearing of the lack of incidents. Great participation, great weather. We were fortunate. What we've done is we'll ask Debbie Buckley to kind of summarize the week at our next council meeting with some of the volunteers that we've heard from before, and give them an opportunity to kind of talk about the events that they were involved with. But certainly, it was a great effort on everybody's part. The whole community was involved, so we're very happy with the way that things unfolded through the week. So, now that we've celebrated our past, our next order with council will be our visioning, and we are scheduled to meet with our consulting team at a staff level in the next week or two. And at our next council meeting, hopefully, we'll be kicking off that whole effort of reviewing what our future holds. And so, that will eventually lead to our comprehensive plan and our Parks and Rec plan. We've had a lot of input. I know that you all have submitted names. We'll be summarizing that, putting it out over the next couple of weeks, making sure that we've identified all the individuals that have come forward, and then obviously adding anyone that wants to participate, working on evolving those groups to the topics, and then having presentation and having a kickoff meeting for the public to start to engage in the process of just looking at our community and where we'll go in the future. So, it's pretty exciting stuff. So, that's what's on the horizon, and that's really all I had to report, other than the topic line in general.
Great. Thanks, Ron. All right, old business. V.A. Homes acquisition. What's this about?
It's old.
It's old. How old is this? How long has this thing gone on?
It's going on a long time. Very happy to report that we are in the last stage of acquiring the V.A. Homes, and we have our developer in attendance with us this evening. Kind of the last steps along the process have been working with the IRB financing. The school is in agreement with, the school district is in agreement with the city at this point in terms. They will be taking final action this week, so that will finalize the IRB portion of it. You have a municipal order that was added to the agenda with the attachment that essentially states that agreement. Again, they're agreed in principle, they'll be reviewing this and making action at some meeting that they call later this week. I think one thing that is added in here is there's actually a pilot, a part of the pilot is payable to the city of Fort Thomas, beginning with the year 14 under the terms, which is new, but that works, and it is obviously to the benefit of taxpayers. So, those things are all in order. We and Jan has worked diligently with our counterparts in Washington to finalize all the agreement in the deed. Thirty-one pages, I think, is the final deed. So, if you all are still interested, we have a 31-page deed. We're hopeful. I made them, I shouldn't say I made them. I asked them to be here just to make sure they weren't going somewhere and walking away from a 31-page deed. But we really appreciate your indulgence. It's been a process and a journey that, that we've worked together over the last couple of years, and it's actually been, it was two years in June since this group got involved in our project. So, we're looking forward to moving forward with them. And tonight, we have, Jan, drumroll please. We have a signed deed from the V.A. that this council approved the mayor to sign at our last meeting, and we actually physically have it, so we are going to sign the deed.
I want to use a special pen.
Is it blue?
Oh, I don't know. Let's see. No. Aw, here. No. Blue, okay. Yay. Oh, more. Okay.
We had done this number June.
Right.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
Very dependent on you.
There you go.
Oh, wait a minute, I want to read this.
So, Jan, those are two deeds. There's...
We're going to report in Washington if you have to just copy.
So, we have to still do the developers' and the property insurance different, right? Because we're getting more property than we're...
We're not doing the deed to the developer yet, remember? Because they have to get their financing.
Right, right. Has it been surveyed yet? So, it's ready to do that?
Well, the property's been surveyed years ago.
Yeah, I mean, as far as housing...
I don't think it's removed. Thank you.
Wait a minute, we just did this. Come on, how about our blood? What a weight lifted.
Yeah.
That is awesome. That is awesome.
Just so everybody understands, the work is yet to be done.
Yes.
But, and to that end, we do have the property insured with Crawford Insurance, our insurance carrier, and I do have that information. And then the city will be, obviously, with taking ownership of the property, responsibility for the property, so we'll be doing onsite assessment, securing the buildings, and making sure that it's safe for the public until such time that the developers obtain the property from the city under the terms, and then they'll continue that responsibility. So, again, we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate that we're at this moment in time, so we'll do our, our part until it's ready to get started. So, I'm sure we'll hear from you then.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Rod, do you mind walking us through the pilot, because it's a little bit different than what I saw before? So, the year one, year two, year three, 14, and the year 14 to 30?
Yes. There had been multiple conversations about the terms, and originally, some of the terminology referenced the valuation equal to 200. And really, when, when everything played out and there became a graduated scale of tax rate and increase in property valuation, the key element was that the developers' portion of proceed from the IRB was maintained consistent versus the pilot to the school being consistent. In other words, any increase in valuation then went back to the local tax entities. And out of that came the city's pilot. When it was realized that the amounts that were available under that, then the city had a portion of that to kick in at a certain threshold, and it ended up in the year 14. I hope that explains it.
It does explain, yeah. So, I guess you're assuming annual increase in property value. Is there a percent annual increase in property value that they...
Historically, I think it's about 1%.
So, then the 135, 700 number, is that assuming probably that year one kind of valuation? So, what that 135, 700 number, what's that pay side?
That, that is the amount that the developer is obtaining through this agreement that allows them to borrow the money and pay back the money over time.
So, it's not correlated to the value of the actual finished homes?
No. Their payment is consistent, just to take care of that financing component of the project.
Okay, so I want to make sure I understand it. Okay, 135, 725 will be paid per year to the developers of the total tax revenue, and then the city and the school board split the remainder?
Is that...
Under the terms.
Under the current terms. And so, I mean, it will go up 4% every year in the revenue, because that's what, well, not necessarily.
Depends on the valuation.
But most likely.
And it depends on the valuation as well. If they have a reassessment or valuation.
Ryan, if their valuation changes, yeah.
So, it depends on the school tax rate, the city tax rate, whether, whether those increases occur or not.
Right.
But any additional...
And their value relative to other properties.
Right. And any, any valuation or, or generation of additional revenues from that is part of the pilot to the school, and then at that 14th year, then there's a pilot to the city as well, based on that percentage.
Okay. And then, it doesn't have the term of the bonds in here. What is that anticipated to be? Because it's the last for that term, Rod, if that's what it says, or at least I'd say...
It's a 30-year.
30 years, okay.
And the county has agreed to forego all pilot payments?
Correct.
So, it's anticipated to do that before the end of the year, so it's off the property tax rolls January?
Correct. I think our agreement with the developer is that they'll act within six months from when we approve that at the last meeting. So, that's the terms under the agreement with the city.
All right. Any other questions? All right, let's move ahead. We have a few other items, and then we'll be done. New business consideration, FOP, and I can't say it. AFSP, how do you say it?
AFSP.
AFSP? Ask me what it's that?
Ask.
Okay. Working agreements.
Okay, we have been working with all of our labor union groups toward getting a working agreement that expired on July 1st of this year, and we have this evening agreements for consideration on the FOP, which is the police department, and AFSP, which is our public works department. I have a attached, no, no, that outlines kind of the terms that we came to, and the changes from the previous agreement are enumerated in that, in that memo to council. So, essentially, I think we would need a vote on these individually. So, the terms for the FOP agreement are as noted. It is a three-year contract, calls for a 4%, 3% and 2% increase of base rate of pay, some amendment to the grievance process that requires them to kind of review on their own before they put forward their grievance. There's a 4% increase in the first year only of the monetary items included in the agreement. It amends the line of duty death benefit to cover spouses and dependents for period of 90 days. And then in the third year only of the contract, there's 23, 24 cent increases based on longevity. And then the last amendment was to the educational incentive that is the reimbursement for those working toward degree requirements, and it's related to costs, current costs under the structure of NKU, which is obviously the closest local university, state university. And then in that, it also reflects a percentage of return for an employee based on their achievement of grade. And that language is the same as what the fire department language is in the last change we made in our personnel meeting. So, those are the substantive changes in the agreement from the last degree.
Do you know the total cost of the city? So, if you assume that all of the material remain the same, headcount remain the same, what's the total increase in cost from this no-grievance, so 16, 17, 18?
You can refer to our guidance guy on that. Basically, per year, each percent of increase to, and I kind of look at it across the entire city, each percent of increase is roughly $60,000 across the board. So, and you can almost assume it's going to go across the board, because we give the non-union employees the same increase, and the fire department does have an equity clause in their contract as well, so you can almost assume it's going to be across the board. So, about, yeah, $60,000 per 1% increase. Correct.
All right, what action do we need?[1788.73] Do we need action on this now or does this all come up in form of ordinances later?
No, it would just require action of council to authorize the mayor to sign the working agreement.
Oh, cool, I get to sign something.
So, I'll make that motion.
Your second? Is there further discussion or questions? We'll call Luke, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you all.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Second one.
Second, oh, that's right, there's two.
An AFSCME one.
Oh, Ask Me again, to do that one, okay.
So the Ask Me contract, similar terms. Essentially, the agreement is a three-year agreement. Again, 4%, 3% and 2% increases over the life of that agreement. 4% increase in the first year only for monetary items in the agreement. As noted, there is a provision that reduces an hourly rate by 5% in the event that they have a suspension of the required CDL licensing for any reason other than medical condition. It also identifies a reduction from the previous 5% to a $1 hourly rate reduction in the event that it is a medical suspension of that license. And then there's a 12 cents per hour rate adjustment for longevity with any employee over 10 years of service. And that occurs only in the third year of the contract. So those are the substantive changes on the Ask Me contract.
Any questions? Entertained a motion?
Move and approve.
Your second?
Second.
All right. We'll call Luke, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Aye.
You're done with that now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving right along, Finance Committee reporting the disbursements.
Reported disbursements June 20th through July 17th, 2017. General fund, $426,139.13. Tower Park Fund, $1,551.51. Public Works KDOT Fund, $94,380.1. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $1,140.88. CBD Revitalization, $149,925.66. Waste fees, $72,073.87. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $1,871.23. Total, $747,082.29. With the undersigned members of the Finance Committee recommend that warrants number 221, 2212 through 2397 be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Ms. Kelly member, Mr. Beasley member.
Motion? Your second? We'll call Luke.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Aye.
All right, down to ordinances, resolutions and orders. Ordinance 08, 2017, it's the first reading.
This is a summary of ordinance 008, 2017. An ordinance establishing compensation of the police officers, general services employees, non-elected officers and non-union employees of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year and providing for the manner of paying such compensation. This ordinance sets forth the rates of pay for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year for police officers excluding the police chief, the employees of the general services department who are members of the AFSCME Local Number 286, and non-elected officers and non-union employees. Other provisions include pertaining, include, included pertaining to the definition of the work week, health insurance, compensation based on years of service, educational incentive allowance and overtime compensation.
All right, as I said, that was the first reading, now we'll go to municipal order.
I have a question about that. Since we just approved this contract and since our other contracts expire, can we just declare an emergency and just adopt it? Since we do have, we've obligated ourselves to pay these monies out.
Well, we would have had to put the emergency clause in the ordinance for the first reading.
Well, it's, isn't it retroactive to July 1st anyway?
Yes.
So aren't we, we're already in a...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that screws you up with payroll or whatever.
Well, it already has, has it not?
Okay.
Since we're, so, yeah, I, I see your point, Roger, but...
But we go through this every negotiating process. Traditionally, these, traditionally, the payroll, it doesn't pass until August or so every two, three years. So this is not out of the ordinary.
Not a big deal.
Okay. Okay. All right. Municipal Order 09, 2017.
Municipal Order M009, 2017. A municipal order of the Board of Council, City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement in lieu of taxes with Blenheimfield Shawn Investments LLC and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement.
Would anybody like to? Okay, is there a second on that? We'll call Luke, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Aye.
Okay, one other, Executive Order E007.
Executive Order E07, 2017. An executive order calling Joseph Palucci, a member of the police department, City of Fort Thomas, for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and fixing his compensation for the fiscal year, 2017, 2018.
All right, I'll entertain that from Luke.
Move and approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call Luke, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Ms. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yeah, that's right, do we not?
We don't have to.
But it says approve on it, okay.
That's right, never mind, take back your votes.
All right, cool.
We're not taking heat for that, so that's all.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, all right. If there's no further business, do we need a motion to adjourn? I move to adjourn? Is there a second, whatever, we're adjourned. Still don't understand that, Jan. By executive order, we are adjourned.
Yeah.